Good evening. Welcome to the January 23rd School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. East Hampton Media Channels 191, 192, and 193 is looking for volunteers. And if anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at 413-203-1360. Superintendent Folinsby, do we have any announcements?
Yes, we do. The next regular school committee meetings will be February 13th, February 27th, March 13th, and March 27th, 2018. There is no school on Monday, January 29th, due to professional development and semester change. White Brook Middle School students will be attending classes to make up for the January 5th, 2018 No School Day. There is no school February 19th to the 23rd due to Washington's birthday and winter break. Superintendent updates are available online every Monday. For community members or others who do not have children in our schools and want to receive the superintendent updates, please visit our website at www.EPSD.us and click on Click to Subscribe under Latest Superintendent Update. I also have two other announcements that were not in our packet. First, Kindergarten Information Night will be held Wednesday, January 31st, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at East Hampton High School. This is an event for parents and guardians of incoming kindergarten students to meet each other, connect with teachers and administrators of our East Hampton Elementary Schools, and learn about our kindergarten program. Included in the evening will be information regarding curriculum, transportation, daily schedules, facilities, and more. Childcare will be provided. If you have a child who is ready for kindergarten in the fall, or know anyone who does, we would love to have you join us for an informative evening on the 31st. And also, on Saturday, March 10th, our high school will be hosting the Collaborative's Regional Social Justice and Equity Conference. Registration for the conference is available on the Collaborative's website. I encourage school committee members to attend if possible.
Excellent.
Thank you.
So I just want to make a brief announcement. Due to unforeseen circumstances, Alexandra Dodge has resigned for personal reasons. This was a really hard decision for her, and she sends her apology to the community. She also pledges to stay as involved as possible in the community and in supporting the building, the school building project. Now, according to our charter, the candidate with the next most highest votes is offered the position, and Miren Goldstein has agreed to serve, and we welcome him tonight to the school committee. Miren will be on the Finance Subcommittee, on the Health and Safety Committee, and he will continue to be on the school building. Welcome, Miren.
Thank you very much for having me.
Is there anything you want to say before we get going?
No, looking forward to working with everybody on it.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any correspondence?
We do. We have been invited to the grand reopening celebration of the Emily Williston Memorial Library and Museum on Saturday, February 3rd, from 10 to 12. There will be a ribbon cutting at 10:30 a.m., and it's a chance to see the transformation of the youth department.
Any other correspondence?
I believe that's it for this week.
And that was February 3rd, 10 to 12?
Yes.
10:30 ribbon cutting. Do we have any gifts?
No gifts this week.
Okay. And there is no one here to speak for public speak, so we will move on. The subcommittees haven't met. However, after this meeting, we're going to have work sessions to choose chairs for the Policy Subcommittee and the Finance Subcommittee. So at our next meeting, there will be some sort of update from everybody. Okay? And Collaborative, I believe your meeting is coming up?
Yep, the 31st, but it's still not happened yet, so still no update there.
So after, so at our next meeting, we should have an update from that?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Now, Victoria Dreser is standing in for Karina tonight, so do you have a student representative update?
Yes, we do. This week at the high school, we're having finals Thursday and Friday with the semester change, which will be next Tuesday will be our new classes. And this Saturday, our We the People class, which is taught by Ms. Brown, is heading to Boston to compete in the We the People State Cup. And that's all for today.
Excellent.
Good luck to them.
Yes, it's very impressive what they do, what our students do. They have to study very hard for this, and they've done extraordinarily well in other competitions, so we wish you the best as well.
And do you know how long their trip is?
It's Saturday for the whole day.
That's it?
Well, if we get first place in the competition, then we'll be heading to Nationals, which is in Washington, DC in April.
Okay, wow. Excellent. Okay, so we need to discuss the superintendent search stipend at our last, did I skip our educational policy update? Thank you.
Do you have one?
I do.
We can do that first.
I have good news.
Thank you.
You might have read that the Acting Commissioner has decided to not recommend the expansion of the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion School, so that will not be going to the Board for vote this January. And the Commissioner's reasoning was the same that we have discussed, that that school is not serving equivalent populations to the sending schools. It's serving fewer students of color, fewer ELL students, and primarily offering fewer services to kids with disabilities. So they have an opportunity to appeal it, it could come back in the future, but for now, we will not need to send anyone to the hearing in January, as we had, just now, this month, like bewildered by the calendar already. Yeah, so we don't have to worry about that for now. The other thing that's relevant, as we're seeing how much the Commissioner does have power over these kinds of decisions in our state, the finalists for the Commissioner position are going to be interviewed this Friday, and that will be livestreamed. I'm not sure exactly what time, and I imagine that if it's livestreamed, it'll be archived, but it is an opportunity, if we wanted, to check out those interviews. I have the link, I can email it to anyone who's interested. There are three finalists. One is currently the receiver of the Lawrence Public Schools. Another, that's Jeffrey C. Riley. Angela Canfante Green will be coming from the Office of Instructional Support in the New York State Education Department. And Penny Schwinn is currently the Chief Deputy Commissioner of Academics at the Texas Education Agency. One of the things that people have been talking about through the search process for the Commissioner is that it's a very closed process. There was no public comment on the job description and the requirements that went out. A lot of people have, were felt dismay that the requirements, applicants did not even need to have an advanced degree, way that all teachers in our schools have to have at least a master's. The Commissioner wouldn't necessarily be required to have that. All of these three finalists do, but it wasn't on the listed requirements of the job application, nor was teaching experience. And so there's the real distinction between what is expected of the Commissioner and what our teachers are doing on a daily basis. So certainly, I think we're seeing firsthand how much the superintendent search process is very open and very public. We've gotten public comment on what do you want the job description to look like, what do we want the questions for our interviewees to be, and then it's a group of public volunteers who will be selecting the semifinalists. And it seems like this search for the Commissioner should, at least in small ways, replicate that open public process. So I don't know what it would look like, but I would be interested in talking with you all more about, you know, should that be something that we send a little notes to the Board, or send a note to the Governor? Or I know at some point, we had talked with MASCE, there had been a little bit of action about wanting to have a representative from a public school committee on the Board, because that Board is selected entirely by the Governor, and it doesn't have someone who specifically represents the interests of public schools and represents the public's interest in the schools. So that's something I would also be interested in talking about, you know, thinking about how we can support MASCE in advocating for that.
That's a very good idea. I really think it's short sighted not to have someone from public education serving. I really do. We were making, they're making decisions about education for our state.
Right, about closing schools, schools going into receivership, testing, all sorts of things.
And only one of the three candidates does have teaching experience?
I think they have, yeah, I think, I think they all came through Teach for America, which is in itself a whole other conversation. Yeah. But yeah, I think that's right, in terms of classroom experience.
It's unfortunate. Well, thank you. Thank you for that update. I'm sorry I dropped you from that.
Oh, no, it's fine.
I was really excited to hear that they were going to stop the conversation about the expansion. For all the reasons that our letter had, you know, covered, they had made no changes, and yet we're asking for another reconsideration of the expansion. It just made no sense. They hadn't attempted to address any of those issues. So thank you, that was excellent. So at our last working session, we approved a search stipend for all the work that Sue does for our superintendent search policy. I mean, whole list of activities. And I shared with people a list of some of the things that Sue has to do outside of her workday. Aside from keeping us focused and on task, for the Superintendent Search Committee, she organizes the letters of interest and attends, posts, transcribes meetings, minutes, prepares the schedule, issues letters to search committee members. I mean, the list is quite extensive of all those duties. So the current range, depending on how wealthy schools are, is 3,000 to 5,000. Her, the original one before, six years ago, was 2,100. And we need to decide tonight what we are going to provide for this time, for this search. So does anybody have any thoughts on this? I mean, we are a school, we are not as big as some of the other schools that probably can offer a lot more money.
Yeah, I think it's a tough situation, because Sue does amazing work and makes all of our jobs possible, and I certainly think we want to recognize that monetarily, and also knowing that we have to be really careful student budget.
Correct. Does anybody have any thoughts?
I was just, where, so the stipend, and maybe Nancy is the best, or someone, where would the funds actually come from? So school committee budget, the school department budget?
School committee budget. Yes.
Okay. So it comes out of ours?
And do I read this report saying it's roughly about 100 hours is what we're projecting, right? It says 48 and 1/2 so far, and expecting to double that. So we're looking at roughly 100 hours of time put to this search.
Want you to share what's?
And that's above and beyond her regular schedule.
Yeah, exactly. And that's what the stipend is to cover, 100 hours.
Figured out the time and a half. Yeah, can you restate that? I think you got that, you had a total for hours that came from T.O.
I have it in front of me, but, you know, we asked the Director of Business Services to try to calculate, you know, how many hours, a time and a half, based on what Sue had given.
Yep.
And, you know, and then, and an hourly rate, so, you know, and it was over what, you know, she had gotten before, certainly, in terms of stipend, larger than that, but...
Did Dale have a recommendation?
No, she was just trying, you know, I said that you all had asked for some more information.
Yep.
And so that was the way she came up with it. She said, you know, this is just one way of possibly looking at it.
Do we know what that number is, though, or can we say what that number is?
I think it was about 2,700.
Yeah. That's what it would work out to, roughly. But that's under what you said, most schools, you said, from 3 to 5. Most schools are paying 3 to 5. And I did talk to Dale and got that range from her, so...
That's what we're looking at.
And Sue does work very hard.
Yes, she does. So would it be in our budget to at least go to the minimum of what other schools are doing and not go below that?
We could find that in the budget, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, when I talked to Dale, I think her sense was, you know, something reasonable, we can absolutely, we'll figure it out.
I think that certainly represents a, what seems like a substantial increase from the last time around. It does seem conscious of our own strapped budget, but it also seems to go a little bit above and beyond the number that Dale figured out. So that seems, certainly seems the route to take, from my perspective, without more information.
So you're thinking like 3,000 is a little bit over what Dale was estimating, and it really was an estimation. You know, the hours could be more than that, so...
True, true. That was based off of the 100-hour estimate, or their bounds?
So is there any more discussion? Do we have a proposal? Do you want to think about that?
I propose that we make it 3,000 for the superintendent search.
I'll second that. Any more discussion? All those in favor? That was easy. Okay. All right. So we took care of that. I don't think we have anything under other, except to remind everybody that we are going to afterwards, just have a work session, a very short work session, to take care of taking chairs for our Subcommittee. So now, Superintendent Folinsby, would you like to give us your update?
I certainly would. I have two rather brief updates. You have the updated 10-point action plan, Culture and Climate Action Plan, in your folder, in your packet. And I've highlighted, and that's what I'll do for each meeting, I'll highlight the area that shows a change. And I'm happy to announce this evening that all of the mid-year stakeholder surveys have been completed and sent out, and all survey data will be collected by January 26th. So I would hope that I'll have that data to be able to share with you at our next school committee meeting. Our diversity coordinator, Julian Levin, will be looking at the data and collecting it in a way that she will present to us when that's ready. On January 27th, the Stakeholder Work Group will meet to review all of the data, and will also work with Ms. Levin to draft the findings for us to present to you. So that's good news. Seems like we've been able to get a lot of things done, and now with our Student and Family Diversity Liaison, it's, we're able to do even more things, and we're going to do some more things that will add to this update, and I'll share with you next time. Any questions on the update?
No, looking forward to hearing that information.
Will the Liaison be looking at that information as well? Is that what you're working on?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, they're working very closely together. And...
And will they be here when you present that information?
I will have Ms. Levin here, and perhaps Ms. Hamilton will come with her, or somebody from the Stakeholder Advisory Committee. The Stakeholder Advisory Committee has students and parents, family members, and staff on the committee as well, so we'll give you a good presentation on that. And the other update I have is a school project, school building project update, and I've included a copy of the PowerPoint from our January 16th forum in your packet, and a copy of Commonly Asked Questions. I joined the Mayor and School Department Director of Business Services, and our owners' project managers, and the project architect, and the Chair of the Building Committee, Tom Brown, for a panel presentation. The forum was attended by approximately 100 participants. Our chief of, Fire Chief was here making account. He was happy that it didn't go over 100, but it was close to 100. A copy of the Commonly Asked Questions was passed out at the meeting. We decided that there were questions that we were seeing on Facebook, questions that we were hearing out in the community, that it would be a good idea to collect those questions and get the factual answers to them, so that we have a copy that we can send out if the questions appear again. And we're encouraging everyone to send us any new questions that you hear or that you have. So those are available on our website at www.EPSD.us. If you go to School Building Project Forum in the drop-down menu, then you'll be able to get the Commonly Asked Questions and the PowerPoint with lots of good information about the building project. I would say that the response from the public that evening was overwhelmingly positive, and we were able to answer other questions that came up that weren't on our commonly answered questions, commonly asked questions. And so we were very pleased by the forum and very pleased by the attendance. I don't know if anyone else, Mayor LaChapelle, if you did?
Yeah, I was just, I'm going to say, the, I've gotten a lot of really good feedback on the frequently asked questions. I've seen it shared on Facebook. I think it really got the word out there on top of the hearing itself. And interestingly, and I'd be, wonder if Victoria agrees, students have come up and said that they were excited by it, and had seen stuff on Facebook, and felt really good about the project. I don't know if there's any kind of indication or feeling at the high school about the project, but I'd be curious to know if...
Yeah, I definitely think that, like, students are, like, really excited about there being a new school, because, you know, the high schools, they've been to, like, Maple Center, Pepin, and White Brook, and they've seen, like, these, the condition of these schools, and I think that, like, we all just want, like, a better environment for the next generations.
Thank you. Yeah, very nice job, and I thought the questions at the forum were wonderful and well-thought-out, and I think made the whole committee, from my perspective, think even, you know, in more detail and holistically about the project.
And the commonly asked questions that were presented, were all the questions that were out there in the community really, and it's, what I liked about is, you heard an answer to that all at once, instead of, you know, some of these answered one question, and four more pop up. Every question that we were aware of got answered, which was really nice.
Yeah, Nancy, I mean, the questions that were chosen and put together, I know we had a conversation about, I was going to send questions, and the fact sheet really hit all the major questions. It was, it's really a nice piece, and I think it complemented the spreadsheets, I mean, the PowerPoint, very nicely.
Well, it's a great team effort. You know, we really had a lot of people putting a lot of hours in. Our architects, our project managers, Mayor, our Chair of the Building Committee, Building Committee members, Director of Business Services, putting lots of time in to try to get as much information out as possible. One other thing that we're going to do, and I think it's two weeks from Monday, we're going to start doing individual forums at each school building, because our teachers have lots of questions. They want to know more specifics about the classroom space and storage space for their materials, and, you know, what special education service, rooms for special education services are. So we will be doing that at a faculty meeting at White Brook, and I believe it's two weeks from Monday. And then we'll do one at each of the other elementary schools, too, to give them an opportunity to have their questions answered, and to see the diagrams up close and really understand the project and the many benefits that it will have for all of us. So we're all very excited about it.
Could you make those dates, could we get that in an email or post it on the, I don't know if the website, I just, I'm thinking if members of this committee or the School Building Committee would want to attend or could attend the teacher forums, just to one, if nothing else, listen to the feedback of the teachers or the questions. But maybe there would also be a question to the member of this committee or the School Building Committee of what the thought was behind that. And I certainly am interested in attending any of them that I can, just to listen in.
Certainly. This evening at the School Building Committee, we decided on the date of the next forum, which I believe is March 20th. Thank you. I have 13 in my head, because we'd been looking at that, but I knew that wasn't right. So March 20th, but we'll be getting lots of information out about that forum, and we'll have some new information at that time as well. So again, I just ask the public, if you have any questions that you feel haven't been answered, please send them to us. Send them to my email, send them to any of the School Building Committee members, and we'll be sure to get the answers for you.
I have a question. The forums with the teachers right now, those are the preliminary ones, just to show them the design, it's not the, like, nitty-gritty survey of what an elementary school teacher really wants versus, or is that, is that their time to, that's going to come later on?
Right, so there's furniture, fixtures, and finishes stage in the project. And that's where they bring in groups of teachers and show them different kinds of furniture and finishes, and think about what they would want in their classroom.
Poster drawer.
Right, right, so they get an opportunity to weigh in on that, but that comes later on in the project.
So that'll be much further down the road, okay? Because a few people have asked me.
Yeah, but they, I think it's important for teachers to understand, and we'll reassure them at the forum, that, and the high school teachers can reiterate that, that there are many, many meetings with teachers before final decisions are made about what their classrooms look like, what furniture and what technology are in their classrooms, so... This is more to look at the different spaces that will be in the building, including the outdoor spaces, that will give especially our elementary students and faculty access to the outdoors, green spaces for recreation and for instruction, you know, in life sciences and horticulture, and all kinds of possibilities. So we're very excited about it.
If I can just add one thing, too, I think, just to point out, too, that the School Building Committee is now being recorded, and so that the public can watch those on the East Hampton Media Channel to be able to, it takes a couple days, but those are all going to be now recorded and public, so that everybody can see that full transparency, so...
And I just will mention that Miren is on the School Building Committee, as is Shannon, so, you know, and of course, the Mayor. So we've got good representation, and that's the chair, sorry.
It's okay. I'm new.
All right, so we've got good representation here. Thank you.
Excellent. So now on to warrants and payrolls.
Oh, already.
Unless I missed something.
So I move to approve the school payroll dated January 18th, 2018, in the amount of
I'll second that motion.
So there's a motion to approve the school payroll dated January 18th, 2018, in the amount of $487,740.17.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated January 18th, 2018, in the amount of $161,805.67.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated January 18th, 2018, in the amount of $161,805.67. Do we have a second?
I'll second that as well.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Excellent. May I use minutes?
Yes. Motion to approve the minutes from a work session on January 17th, 2018.
So there's a motion to approve the minutes from the work session from January 17th, 2018. Do we have a second?
I'll second you.
All those in favor? Motion passes.
Motion to approve the minutes from a regular session meeting on January 9th, 2018. Motion to approve the minutes from a regular session meeting on January 9th, 2018.
There's a motion to approve the regular session, January 9th, 2018. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
I'll abstain, since I wasn't.
All righty. And on to out-of-state field requests.
Oh, that's on. Yeah, all right. So we have a request for an out-of-state field trip. The EHS is seeking to go to the Hartford Stage on March 8th of this year to see a production of Murder on the Orient Express. And the cost per student is $20.
Excellent.
Motion to approve the request.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, do we have a second? All right, all those in favor? Oh, that was short. I'm sure they'll get one, but especially during budgets, yeah.